Yes, I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor Study Session of June 17th, 2021. And I would do a roll call. This is Mayor Kit Kuhn, Councilmember Aversold.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Hi, Councilmember Franch is excused, Councilmember Himes.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Wook.
Here.
Thank you. We have City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
Intrum City Clerk Josh Stecker.
Here.
Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Here.
Finance Director Dave Rodenbach.
Here.
And I don't believe anyone else. So with that, we're, we're, let's see, we're talking about the, it's not the CARES Act money. What is it called, Bob?
It's called the American Rescue Plan Act, and it's the, labeled the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund.
Great. We'll try to keep this meeting within an hour, but we'll see how it goes. And with that, I'll turn over to City Administrator Bob Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I don't want to go into great detail on the memo randomly sent out last week, make sure you can take any questions. The reason I put that extra detail in there was to make sure everybody understood there are some uses that we're not allowed to use the funds for. But I want to make just a couple other general comments here that I think are important to council when they just consider this issue today. These are, these funds are one-time in nature, and therefore, when we discuss this internally with the staff and the mayor, we felt we should recommend these monies be spent on one-time capital projects, not operations and or maintenance costs that we couldn't replenish. The second one was, we received a couple of weeks ago, a request which I participated in. It was from Pierce County, from Executive Dan Meyer and the Council Chair Derek Young, to participate in a meeting with all the Pierce County cities and Pierce County itself, to have cities, consider having cities pool their funds with Pierce County to make it go much further. There's, there's a plethora of different things you can do with the money. But we felt, given Gig Harbor's unique status here, we didn't think we'd necessarily get any benefit out of pooling the funds with Pierce County. But then you'll see that in the recommendations as well. And then third, on page two, it's the recommended projects. I just want to point out that we've, we've got these, we think, in what we suggest would be a recommended priority order. But I also want to mention the third bullet, it's labeled Canterwood Boulevard, the Water Main Emergency Intertight. We got some more discussion about that internally, and based on the discussion and support and help from Jeff Langhelm, we're suggesting we not consider this one. It's too small an amount, and to subject it to the federal requirements, we could easily increase this cost without any necessary, well, say, benefit to it. The other two, the third, the fourth and fifth ones, the North Well and North Harbor Drive Santor Sewer are large enough projects that we feel could be federal projects. The first two, as you'll see, there are smaller amounts of money, the Civic Center HVAC overhaul, and then the Council Chambers Municipal Court video and audio modifications. But those are both, would come under small works projects, and they already have been approved through the bidding process with the state of Washington. So we could find vendors and/or equipment through the state vendors contracts. And so we felt those would be easy enough. We wouldn't have to go in and worry about extraordinary federal audits or federal requirements for those two, because they've already met the requirements from the state. I see there's a, Councilmember Aversold has a question.
I'll wait till you finish, Bob.
Okay, so that concludes my general, topic, excuse me, my, my general thoughts about this. And again, referring back to page two that I just concluded discussing, the staff and mayor recommending that we ask council to look at these in the order that they're listed here as far as for funding. Right now, we don't have any funding available, for instance, for the Civic Center HVAC overhaul and replacement. I know that's a pretty widespread. It's $100,000 just for a cooling system replacement versus a complete overhaul replacement of the system at $500,000. And we need to hire a consultant to determine that extent of that work. But this, I'll call under industry standards, the useful life of this equipment has been reached. And this is within consulting consultation with Jeff Langhelm and him and with his staff. This was a commercial private building, they would have depreciated this expense already. The building, I believe, is what, 17 years old, Jeff? 18 years old now?
I'm getting up there. I think it's 19.
19, okay. And then the other one, this is more unique, the Council Chambers Municipal Court Video and Audio Modifications. Again, it's a pretty big spread, but it really depends on what the council like to do with this. I understand, I know the mayor's supportive of this, and I think a couple of councilmembers, a few have already asked about this as well. But we, at one point, were looking at having to simulcast, once we went back to reopening City Hall or the Civic Center or the public meetings. And we were still, we were going to be required to provide remote access to anyone who wanted to sit someplace else outside of the Civic Center and do the proceedings. It would almost be like they were sitting in the chambers themselves. They had to have access to be able to make comments. They'd have to have access to see the entire dais. They'd have to have access to see what's on the screen overhead. And they'd have to be able to participate as though they were sitting in the chambers. That may not come to fruition. We're getting signals from the governor's office that he may lift those requirements. However, we have understood from at least a few councilmembers, and I know Mayor Kuhn's interested as well, is to continue, continue providing remote access for our public meetings, in particular, the council meetings. And we'll face the same issue with the court. We're not sure which direction the court's going to take on this thing. But there's a, there's a push to, to allow for remote access to the municipal court as well. With that, I'll open it up to questions. Councilmember Aversold.
So, am I muted here? Two-part question. I guess the first part question, are we supposed to just pick one of these things? Or can we say we like all of these and let's go for it? Second question is related to the HVAC system. Remind me, I believe a couple of months ago, our tech guy Keith was telling us that our HVAC system was inadequate and that we needed a new one to, you know, move the air in through that, that room. If, you know, we did go through this, would that benefit that and take those costs away that we were looking at to replace that system?
Let me restart your second part. That HVAC system for the server room has been, has been installed and is complete. So that's a separate system. That would, that would not be included with the Civic Center. The first question you had, and I'll ask Jeff to weigh in here. I think you could certainly put money towards all four of these. We've got about $2.99 million. But you, I don't know if you want to break them up, but clearly we can do the first two if council's interested, and then possibly the, the third or fourth one. But I don't know if Jeff would recommend splitting up the, of these costs between different funding sources either. But I'll ask him to comment on that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that $2.99 part.
And I'll, I'll just say that anytime we federalize a project, of course, we all know that it's costs us money to do that. It's a more expensive process.
Thoughts?
I would suggest that we, as City Administrator, City Administrator Larson suggested, we, we look at the first two bullets as a for sure. And then pick one of the last two projects and go after that. Because if we federalize both projects, then we've got two projects that will be more expensive instead of just federalizing one.
Good. Jeff, also, if you would mind just commenting, I forgot to mention this, I apologize. I don't remember if the North Well, the, the fourth project, or the North Harbor View Drive Santor Sewer replacement, if either one of those two included design costs and other costs associated with this, those projects. Those are eligible expenses, I guess I needed to point that out.
The North Well includes, I know for sure that one includes design costs, the North Harbor View Drive Sanitary Sewer. I don't know if that does or not. I'm, I just was basing it off of complaint information.
All right, just to make sure council's aware of that. And then I've got, in this order, Mayor Kuhn, Councilmember Wook, and then Councilmember Rodenberg. Go ahead, Mayor.
So we did fix the one in the computer room. Marty has been tweaking the air conditioner and the heating unit every year. I mean, he's been ordering parts. At one time, he's, he's way past his retirement. Luckily, he stays off. But it's, it's a mess, and he's, he's, he orders these parts every year, and it's, it's, it's a big deal. So this is a great, great use of the funds. Just to clarify what, what Bob said as far as the audio and the video, it will be great for our court. But I think most of us agree that some people at home, some people would rather stay at home and not necessarily come to a council meeting. So I, I think that's a huge benefit going forward. So some things could come out of COVID. But we, just so people are aware, we will, we will probably be back in session in our council before we have that. Now Josh is looking at YouTube and seeing if there's a way, when we're back in court, back in the chambers in July, if we can have audio and video right away, just on a temporary thing. And we may get that, we may not. But then the goal is, after we, after we order this stuff, which Josh is taken into, within, I don't know, as fast as we can, then we'll get that, that audio and video, so it'll be permanent, so people will have a choice.
If I could just comment on that, Mayor, that last part, if the governor lifts all the restrictions on, on open meetings, and VA will allow us to go back and do, and do the general sessions, say, starting on the July 12th meeting, we wouldn't necessarily wait for that equipment. We would obviously have the council conduct their, their meeting in, in person if they like to. And then we would get the equipment as necessary. We can, we still have the ability to do that. We, we're not aware of any further restrictions. There's been a rumor the government, government may not lift the Open Public Meeting Act requirements. But we're, we're still waiting for that one, too. It's a pretty fluid situation.
Right, and I meant to say that, but that's what I meant.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Councilmember Wook?
Yeah, so I'm really excited about both of these, because we never know what the temperature's going to be like in Gig Harbor. We know what the temperature has been like in the Midwest. And so we need to have, we need to have good working air conditioning, I think, and heating as well. So I think that's a really great project going forward for everyone, for all of our employees, and for any citizens who might come back when we have council meetings in, in public. And I'm especially thrilled about the audiovisual and being able to, if folks don't want to come and attend our council meetings in person, that we have this available for them if they're home. I guess it would be on, online somewhere, but, and, and whatever we do, I think we need to do it really well. Not, you know, just really do it well, and hopefully so that they can also reply in a, in a timely manner. So hopefully they could reply at the same evening, and, you know, they can make their comments during public comment or during the time when the issue is being discussed, and, and a visual, a video of this at the same time. And, and I hope that whatever it costs, we have the money now. We should do it well with good equipment and with equipment that will last for a long time. I think this is a really good project for our community, and it will benefit them a lot, because we don't know when the next pandemic will hit. So I think it's really important, and thank you for putting this on the list. I certainly support it.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think those first two items are, are important. There's almost $3 million here, and, and I certainly respect staffs going to the trouble of choosing which projects we're looking at. They know more about those than I think any individual councilperson does. But I'm curious if there's any projects that we are thinking is going to run over budget due to incros, increases in building materials or, or something we didn't expect was going to happen. And if maybe some of these funds could be used to subsidize, not necessarily subsidize, but go towards those projects, so the city wasn't hurt by, by increased cost or underestimating what something might cost. You know how things escalate? So are there projects, is Langhelm, that have gone, cost have rocketed, that maybe we should use some of these funds for? $3 million, a lot of money.
Jeff, what about the public workshop?
That's, that's the only one that will likely fit into the category, Councilmember Rodenberg, that we, we are anticipating the construction costs to be higher than anticipated, because it's more of a building materials. The, we, we haven't been seeing the significant increases in construction material prices for, across the board, for public works type projects, more for building construction. And so that's the only one off the top of my head that is, is in the current budget or in the anticipated 2022 budget. I don't know, I haven't looked at the criteria to see if that would fit, because that's funded by multiple sources, including the city's general fund. It doesn't.
And I agree that we should keep the projects out of the, you know, not federalize many of these, any of these projects, unless absolutely necessary. But I think the public works facility should be considered recipient of some of the funds.
That, that's, let me have a conversation with our consultant about that, what it would do to federalize this. I don't know, I'm not familiar with how building projects will be impacted from being federalized. So let me have the conversation with them about that. I can say that, looking at our capital projects, especially just the two that you see listed here, out of those two funds, the water fund, operating fund, and the sewer operating fund, the water operating fund is the one that has the least amount of cash available to it. It's the one we constantly look at when we're doing rate studies to say, wow, how are we going to keep these capital projects funded and not significantly increase the rates? I don't know if Dave has anything to add to that. But when, when you look at those two funds, by far, the water fund is the one that is closest to being at the need to take out loans.
I think that's reason to prioritize it.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, so this kind of piggybacks off of what Mr. Rodenberg just asked about. With $3 million, in my understanding, that we could pick one of the two expensive projects, and it sounds like maybe the well project is the one, given the water fund. And that we could do both of those top projects, the HVAC and the council chamber video modifications. That would, that would still be under $3 million. Is that correct?
I would suggest that that is correct. The, if the water well number nine comes in at about $2 million, that leaves you about $1 million. We're just not really certain of the, the HVAC overhaul. Obviously, it's been stated, we need to hire a consultant to know the extent of that work. We're trying to estimate as high as $500,000. But, you know, I would, would want to err on the safe side by saying that would be one of the projects, the other would be the, you know, the council chambers modifications, and then one of those two down below. I think we'd be well within. And then if we had some money left over, you know, we don't necessarily have to spend it, but I think we would try to find someplace to spend it. I think we could find something that we could use it on. Especially if it's a, perhaps a state, a state approved bid process for a vendor. I think we could find something we could spend it on in the next two to three years. We've got till, I believe, 2024, if I remember correctly, to encumber the funds. So we've got almost three and a half years to do that. I think we could pull up with something. Once we get to establish what the other three projects actually cost, after we, you know, had a, up with the sum total for those.
And I just will add one comment to that. The Civic Center HVAC system, again, you, as City Administrator Larson has said, there's quite a broad-ranging cost there. The, the, one, one unknown, big unknown we have, and we would hopefully get this ironed out once we have a consultant on board, is if we do have to do a complete replacement of the HVAC system, will we be required to bring up certain parts of the billing to new codes, energy codes essentially? If we are required to do that, then that may, well, will likely increase the total cost of the project even more. And so that's a big unknown at this point.
Yeah, Director Langhelm, you mentioned specifically one of those issues that we were well aware of. This building has been grandfathered, I believe, for the fire sprinkling system. And if we were needing to go in and update that or add it, that would have an add cost to this project. We have, we have not established that yet.
Right.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. So if I could just do a quick summary, if that's okay, we're going to look at the first two procedures of us, and then the third one would be the North Well development. And if I understand correctly, Dave Rodenbach, the finance director, is working with the Office of Financial Management at the state level. That's the folks who are going to be distributing the funds, and his staff's going through this. And my understanding is that they're ready to distribute the funds fairly quickly here. And so we would be looking at our, our first, first allotment in the next, perhaps, couple of weeks or months. And that we have that 2.99 million. So we'll start moving on these projects rather quickly, but we'll have to, it'll take a little bit of time. We just, we don't need to spend them, as I said, but they'll, we'll at least put it in a, in some type of account. And then we'll, we'll continue to brief council as we move along with these projects.
Um, since we, since we have a few minutes, but if we're done with this subject, I have a couple of thoughts, but I don't know, I think we're done.
We have one, Councilmember Rodenberg, can you stand up?
Yeah, so just to summarize, none of this is going to be cast in concrete right now. So what, if I, I want to make sure I understand. So we are, we are probably, we would really like and probably will go after the first two items and the North Well that may leave us some money left over, and we've got several years to use it. Is that everyone's understanding? Good, thank you.
And Jeff's going to check into the public works, as you had mentioned. Councilmember Rodenberg?
All right. If you think that wraps up, thank you very much, everyone. And now we've got, Mayor said he had a few other.
Well, I, maybe it's premature, but Dave, you and I talked about the Civic Center bonds this morning, and we actually have 15 minutes or so. Is it premature to just bring them up to speed?
Sure, we can bring them up to speed.
Yeah, um, one thing, yeah, we're, we're talking about, so as people know, the Civic Center has debt on this building, and we've saved money, and go ahead, Jeff. Okay, say it, Jeff. Um, anyway, we've come up with a good scenario that I, that Dave, all that Dave explained.
Okay, uh, the Civic Center bonds were taken out back in, I think, back in 2000. And we, at the time we sold the bonds, there was a strong feeling to pay them off early. So through the budget process, we created the Civic Center Debt Reserve Fund. And over the years, we've cobbled together about 1.6 million estimated year end this year to, to be in that Civic Center Debt Reserve Fund. About in 2010, the bonds became callable. But if you remember back in 2010, we had the Great Recession hit. And back at that time, council, and it was our recommendation, it might be kind of not, it might not make much sense to spend our one and a half million, 1.2 million, because we were really on the edge. We had no idea where things were going. Development had halted, and we were getting almost nothing. And so we hung on to the money, and in the process, we refinanced the bonds to, to develop a savings and, and to get some interest savings. So we, the 2010 bonds now are the Civic Center bonds. And as of now, there's about 2.6 million, 2.7 million outstanding in those bonds. And so we, we have three options. One, do nothing. And if we do nothing, we're spending about $600,000 a year out of the general fund to pay off those bonds through 2026. Option two that you're going to be seeing is, we spend the money in the Civic Center Debt Reserve Fund. So we drain that fund and spend 1.6 million buying back our bonds. And we borrow another 1.1 million at an interest rate about half of what we're paying right now. And that would lower our cash payments out of the general fund to about 230,000. We end up, in, in rough numbers, we gain about $30,000, $350,000 in cash that we can spend out of the general fund in doing that. And, and they all have a present value savings, but just to keep it in cash terms and, and simple. And then option three is borrow the entire 2.65 million at a lower interest rate. And then we'll save about $10,000 a year in cash.
Which is about $40,000 over the life of the bond.
We were planning on bringing those to the Finance and Safety Committee meeting Monday. And hopefully you'll see it at the upcoming council meeting subsequent to that.
So we, we thought we'd explain, since we had a few minutes, and we will bring that to the Finance and Safety. It's, it's great to share all this with you. And, you know, I've heard for 10 years that, you know, we still have this debt for this building. And, but we have the money, but we don't use it. And, you know, it's $2.6 million in debt. So, you know, Bob, Dave and I think that if we put the $1.6 million down, that we are, that was, that is actually earmarked for that, reduce the debt to less than, less than half, from almost $600,000 down to 230, and then get that lower interest rate, that, you know, we look like we're good stewards. We will only carry about $1.1 million worth of debt. And that's what that money was earmarked for. And, and then that, that money's coming out of our general fund. That will free, free up, free up $320,000 a year of money we're paying. So anyway, it, we're just giving you, you know, since we had a few minutes, it's great for you all to know what we're thinking about. But you're going to be involved in the whole process.
Good. Councilmember Rodenberg, and then Councilmember Wook?
Yeah, I applaud the people responsible for keeping an eye on this. And whoever came up with that option two deserves a big plaque on their wall, because that's, to me, seems like an option to save that much money.
That would be Vice Director Rodenbach.
Yeah.
Dave?
Thank you.
Unless he wants to let somebody else in on that fun, but Dave's primary.
It would be Dave Treger, but we, we kind of all do it as a team. So, so there's a lot of good people we work with.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wook?
Yes, thanks, Dave, for taking care of that. During the last three years, didn't we hear something before? Excuse me, about how much money has been saved? And did it go into a special account?
It's about, we have a reserve, we were, we were, you mean the reserve fund?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, we, we were, you know, I had heard that they were saving like 80, $40,000 to $80,000 a year, you know, prior to 2018, which is not much on a $30 million budget or whatever. We, we have been saving, we have been asking council, and they, council has agreed, if we could put $1 million basically a year in a reserve fund for emergencies. And I'll tell you, we're fortunate we have to use it, but it can go on one road project. So I, you know, I plan to ask, I plan to put in my, in my budget with council support, a million dollars again for 2022. So it's.
So it goes into the reserve account, and we use it from the reserve account?
No, it stays, stays for emergency.
So then have, do we have, so that would mean then that 2020, we put a million dollars in there?
I did, you'll have to help me on that, too. Yeah, we did. We put a million dollars in 2020, and we might have put some money in 2019.
We put just 80,025, or the year before, we put a million last year, and we budgeted a million for this year. So we'd be, we'll be doing a million this year.
Right.
So 80,000 in 2019 and a million in 2020?
That's correct.
Right.
And a million, and a million budgeted for 2021.
And actually, it was a million 80 for, for 2020.
A million 80, but just 80,000 in 19?
That's correct.
And then a million for 2021 is going to be a million?
Yes.
So this money goes into the reserve account, and are we investing in something? What are we doing with that to make it grow?
We, we pretty much keep all of our money in the state treasures and local government investment pool. And, and so it's, it's a money market account.
Got it.
And again, my, my goal way after, you know, five years down the road for the city or 10 years, is that the city actually has, you know, three to five million of savings for emergency situations, you know, the sewer, the water, I mean, roads, you know, just earthquakes.
So we should have that, really, if that was the goal, we should have that by the end of maybe 2022?
2023, three or four. If we put a million in next year's budget, we should have, I think that would be just over 3 million.
3,160,000, if that was the, yeah.
Right.
3,160,000 in 2022.
Which, again, you can see how things, things can get gobbled. Which again, you can see how things, things can get gobbled up. I mean, we, we are due for, or an earth, you know, there are, it doesn't take much. We, we're lucky on COVID because we have retail, but you never know.
Yeah. Okay.
And the neat thing is if we pay down that bond debt, that's not touching that. That money was the Civic Center debt reason to pay off. So it's, it's, uh, it's good.
So the money that would come in from paying off the debt and then getting something at a lower interest rate. What happens to that money or is that just paper money?
It doesn't, it won't touch the reserves you're talking about. You were talking about strategic reserves. Those will be untouched.
Okay.
Money that we're talking about spending is specifically for the Civic Center debt.
Right. It, it'll, it'll reduce your payment load from, uh, David, about $350,000 a year if, if you do this.
Yeah, our payments will go down.
Wow.
250.
Wow. Wow. That's excellent.
You'll have 350,000 more to play with in your budget.
Oh, that's good news.
Yeah, just to put it in terms of our council.
Our revenues, our revenues stay where they're at. Yeah.
We can always find something to spend money on.
Don't suggest they got that kind of money to play with here.
Yeah.
You have to budget for it.
Yeah. Well, and there you go for the public works department.
There you go. Where's Jeff? He sort of stayed around.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Good. You're welcome. Thanks.
Well, thank you for, uh, giving us the time, you know, with the first topic we had to allow to, you know, give you a heads up on that even before the finance committee.
Yes, thank you. Was that it, Mayor, the extent? Any other issues?
No, I think, uh, I'm, I'm, that was the only thing. And thanks for letting me bring that ahead since we had some time.
Very good. Uh, Councilor Heims?
Yeah, just, uh, just, uh, again, a big thank you on, on both those items called, uh, I think fiscal responsibilities. Going into the coronavirus thing, knowing that we've got a little extra corn in the back of the teepee is a great, great, great idea. Call, hey, uh, with the reserves that we've got, uh, we're not hanging out there like some of the other cities are. Um, and by the way, PCRC just underscores that effect called, there, there are people that are scrambling right now called, what are we going to do? So, uh, even though we didn't get hit as bad as we thought we were, uh, just the fact that we had that there, I think was of, uh, considerable comfort. So, um, good work. And, um, yeah, if we can, um, discuss both, uh, both these topics and get out of here before Councilmember French gets here. And hears about us talking money and let's go spend it all. Uh, I think I'd be great.
Great. So one more item. Josh, can you let me, um, share the screen? Since we're doing so well, um, I want to give you, since we have a few.
You should have a green button at the bottom of your screen to do that.
A green button?
Yeah, it's called share screen.
Share screen button.
Okay.
You click that on, you can grab whatever you want to put up there. There you go. It's on the screen.
See that? It should show it.
It's up.
Yeah, it's up.
Okay. We're, we are working on this. I wanted everyone to know where, where this is going to be the new sign at Austin Park. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay. So it's Austin Park at Tuolica Estuary. And then, um, a place where a game exists, ancestral homelands at Squabash, Swiftwater people, band of Piao tribe. So we just ordered this sign and, um, it's all, uh, correct with the tribe. So, you know, we're working on other parts of the, of the educational signage that everyone knows that they authorize. So I just want you to know that this is being worked on in different parts. This is just one sign, but we're working on the other parts of the, uh, estuary as well. Averso?
Two questions. Uh, number one is Tuolka and Squabash, are they supposed to be capitalized at all?
Nope.
Okay. Um, and the second question is, is it Austin Park at Tuolka Estuary or is it at Tuolka Estuary at Austin Park?
I know.
Any difference in that?
Well, usually you'd say something that's smaller is within something else. So the, the estuary is much larger than the park.
Okay.
So it would be odd to say estuary, Tuolica Estuary in Austin Park because the park is just, the estuary encompasses, uh, it's a watershed encompasses a lot. So you say, so I think we do it this way. Councilmember Rodenberg?
Yes. Was, was there some talk about maybe a, a sign that had a phonetic, uh, the pronunciation guide? So maybe it would help people understand and, and how to say those words properly. Uh, you know, I, I think when the normal person sees something like that, uh, they're inclined to, uh, not even try to pronounce it right. So.
Right. So.
That might be a good idea if we do that somewhere.
I, yeah, I can answer your question on that. Um, let me share this. So the tribe won't let us do that. Um, the tribe doesn't, they're, they're, they don't let you, um, do phonetics of their language. So if you walk, so we can't do that. But if you go right past the sign, can you see this now?
Right.
Do you see this voice box?
We can see it.
Okay. So right when you go past that sign, this is a solar panelled voice box. And it's going to, so the two top things are actually solar panels. So they're, and the bottom is a speaker. And we've ordered this already and it's not going to have the different languages, but it's going to have four buttons. And it will actually have the tribe tell you the Squabash people were the band of the Piao tribe that, that, uh, were in this area. And then they'll say the name two or three times so that people can get it. And then another button you put, these buttons are going to be 30 to 60 seconds at the longest. And if you push the button again, like you've got a child or someone's antsy, it'll pause it. And if you push the next button, it'll go to the next thing. So these are waterproof, um, they're freestanding. We've already checked. You can't stick gum in there or maybe if it can. If you stick a stick in the, in the voice box, it's not going to hurt it. So we've done a lot of research to get to this, but it's not going to have different languages. But like one button would tell about the tribe, about the people for like 30 seconds. The other button would tell, uh, about the village for 30 seconds. So, um, and actually Lynn, Lynn Stevens is going to do the graphic design on front of this. And is going to be working with the tribe of just something really simple. So good question, uh, Councilmember Rodenberg. This will help us out because then it has, uh, the natives explaining the word to you several times for people to get used to it.
That's great.
Good. Well, this is.
My, I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, I mean, who's going to clean all the duck poop off this thing?
Well, first thing, we're paying for a maintenance program. Uh, we're, we're getting some money back by paying a couple of years for the maintenance. Um, I think you sent me an email saying you were going to do that, right?
I, you know, I, I was drinking at the time. So you can't be, you can't legally hold me to that.
Oh, okay. Well.
That's why you get your joking.
Oh, once I'm not mayor anymore, I'll drink with you and we'll put it in a styrofoam container and we'll go down.
Styrofoam?
Well, no, you're right. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Shoot. Uh, metal, metal, a metal cup.
But, but seriously, this thing is going to be down by the water and it's going to get all kinds of bird poop on it.
Well, it's right by the, it's near the sidewalk. It's just past the sign by the sidewalk. So, yeah, but, um, yeah, I'm really sorry. I said styrofoam, Councilmember. I should have known better. Probably one of the biggest errors I've done in four years here.
This is very cool, Mayor. I love it. That's awesome.
I know. And you've want, you've, uh, been very passionate, all of you have been passionate, but Counselor Denson, you've asked about this and I wanted people to know, we, we are going on this. So thank you all. And this is, this is because of the council too. So thank you.
Very good. Very good. By the way, this is an opportunity via the adopt a park program, Spencer.
There you go. Yep.
All right. So, uh, do I have a motion to, uh, adjourn?
I make that motion where you adjourn this meeting.
That, Ben?
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good day, everyone.